Hey, you're recording?
All right, great. I'd like to call the November 21st, 2020 Bridgewater Town Council meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty. I do have some condolences. I'd like to share. First, I'd like to send out condolences to the family of Stephen D. Visser. Upon his passing on November 4th, 2020, Mr. Visser served in the United States Marine Corps Reserves during the Gulf War. I'd also like to pass on condolences to the family of John K. O'Leary. Upon his passing on November 14th, 2020, Mr. O'Leary served in Company A, 2nd Battalion, 1st US Army, United States Army during the Vietnam War. I'd like to have a moment of silence for those veterans and any other veterans that have passed and first responders. Thank you. Just need to announce that this meeting is being aired live and recorded. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There will be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so via Facebook Live. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the November 10th, 2020 meeting.
Moved.
We've got to move in a second. Mr. Chase, I'll take you as a second. Any discussion?
None.
Mr. Chase? You're on mute. Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yeah.
Mr. Sue's not here yet. Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
Thank you. Announcements from the President. I'd like to announce that, just for public information, the next Bridgewater Town Council meeting is Tuesday, December 2nd at 7:00 PM. We usually have two weeks in between meetings, but due to the election, we had to, we have to have the meeting on December 1st, which is a little bit closer than the two weeks that we normally have. So, we will go through the same process of publishing the agenda, but I just wanted to make people aware of that. I don't have any proclamations. We have citizens' open forum. If there are any citizens that would like to speak, we ask that we keep it to three minutes. Also, if you would be so kind as to identify yourself in your street for the record, that would be great. Is there anyone who would like to speak for a citizen during citizens' open forum? And I don't see anyone. Do you?
No, I do not.
Okay. Moving on to item E, appointments. Our first appointment is Board of Health, William Prince. I want to entertain a motion to approve.
Moved.
Second.
Second. Mr. Fitzgibbons, any discussion?
Just thanking Mr. Prince for putting his name forward.
Great. Mr. Gallagher?
No, thank you.
Any other discussion? I echo those sentiments as well. This requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yeah.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
Our next appointment is for Housing Authority, Stacy Driscoll. Entertain a motion to approve?
Moved.
Okay, we got Mr. Fitzgibbons, any comment?
Thanking Ms. Driscoll for stepping forward.
Okay, Mr. Chase?
No, no comment.
Any additional discussion?
No.
Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
Hey, our third appointment is for Elder Affairs Associate Member, Karen H.
Motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any comment?
No, thank you. Thank you for stepping forward.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Any other questions? Okay, requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
Okay, the time is 7:08. We'll move into hearings. First hearing is petition P 2020-020, poll location Plymouth Street and Mill Street. Is there anyone from the petitioner here to speak on behalf of that? I don't see anyone. And do you?
No, I don't see anybody for this hearing now.
Mr. Dutton, any input?
The only input I can give you at this point is that our highway superintendent, roadway superintendent, had no issue with the placements of the two polls. Well, you've got one poll in front of you on this petition, then another one the next petition. But both have to do with monitoring of the electrical system close to the substation on Mill Street. So, happy to either have the council vote this, if you're comfortable, or put this off till your next meeting when a representative of National Grid can actually be here.
Okay, is there any general questions from the public? Okay, I do not see any. Is there anyone from the public speaking in favor of the petition? Don't see anyone. Is there anyone from the public speaking in opposition of the petition? Seeing none. Are there any questions from town councilors? Seeing none? I will close the hearing at 7:10. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, gonna move in a second. Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
No, I think this is just a standard request. Everything seems to be in line, as the town manager said, so I don't think there's any need to delay it, so.
Any questions from any town councilors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
Okay, the time is 7:11. I will start the hearing for petition P 2020-021, transfer of on-premises all alcohol license from Tracy Ty Ritt, DBA, The Chatterbox, to LFHM LLC, DBA, The Chatterbox. Is anyone here from the petitioner?
Hello, Mr. George, Rob Pellegrini.
Pellegrini, how you doing?
Pretty well, thanks. How are you?
I'm doing well.
Good. Yep, it was a simple asset purchase and sale agreement that closed a few weeks ago, and there is no changes being made whatsoever to the inside or outside of the building. And we're just asking to transfer the license to the new owner.
Thank you. Mr. Dutton, anything to add?
Nothing at this time. Everything is in order, so we certainly are not opposed to the transaction.
Are there any general questions from the public? Seeing none? Is there anyone from the public speaking in favor of the petition? Is there anyone from the public speaking in opposition of the petition?
I see Dr. Hunt has, I think, his hand up.
No, I just gave you a thumbs up.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. We're still getting used to this technology, but thank you, Dr. Hunt. Are there any questions from any town councilors? All right, seeing none, I will close the meeting hearing, excuse me, at 7:13. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Moved.
Second.
A motion, second. Mr. Fitzgibbons, anything?
Nothing. Good luck to the new owners.
Mr. Gallagher?
No, good luck to the new owners.
Any other questions? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
And Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
Mr. Pellegrini, please pass on the council's message. Good luck, and we appreciate them keeping a really good business in Bridgewater going.
I certainly will. Thank you all.
Thank you.
For your consideration tonight, and have a good rest of you.
You too. All right, the time is 7:14. I'll start the hearing on petition P 2020-022, poll location New Pole, Plymouth Street. Is anyone here for the petitioner? Don't see anyone. Mr. Dutton, anything to add?
Only the same thing I added last time. The highway roadway superintendent, Ramadu, has no issue with the placement of the polls and also part of a monitoring system for the grid.
Alrighty. Are there any general questions from the public? Okay, I do not see any. Is there anyone here from the public speaking in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here from the public speaking in opposition of the petition? Do we have any questions from town councilors? All right, seeing none, I will close the hearing at 7:15. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Moved.
Mr. Fitzgibbons, anyone?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
All righty, okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
Okay. Moving on to item G, license transactions, petition P 2020-023, new common vic license LFHM LLC, DBA, The Chatterbox. I'll entertain a motion to approve?
I move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Gallagher, any questions?
No.
No.
Mrs. Loesch, did you second?
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Any questions from the town council? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yeah.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
Great. Okay, we're moving on to H presentations. We will have a presentation from the Charter Review Committee from Chairman Ed Ivaldi. Ed, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me?
All right, we can hear you. All right, the floor is yours.
Great. Well, thanks for having Tom Golden and myself. We're going to share it tonight, even to give you an update on what we've been doing recently. The main focus of our update tonight is on a citizen survey that we conducted back in August and September, and part of October as well, and we've got all the data summarized here that we're going to walk through for you. And then we'll also give you an update on what else we've been doing over the past couple of months. So I'm going to turn it over to Tom, and he'll walk you through the survey update.
Awesome. Hi, everyone. So I'm Tom Golden from Curved Street. So I'm just going to go slide by slide here on our citizen survey. So as part of the Charter Review Committee's process, we created recommended questions, and then as a large group went over the recommendations from previous Charter Review Committee sessions, as well as hot button issues in the town. To conduct the survey, it was promoted both electronically, social media, email, and the town website, as well as word of mouth. Due to COVID, it was harder to do in-person promotion of it, including dissemination of materials, like we had talked about as a group, or putting up flyers. That being said, I do think we got a relatively good response. The survey itself was composed of 13 questions. The first two were demographic questions to ascertain whether the respondents were residents of Bridgewater and where they were. I should also note that we did maintain that information, as well as the IP address of the submitting party, and verified that all respondents claimed to be residents of Bridgewater and the documentation back set up. Following the two demographic questions, there were eight multiple choice questions focused on the previous recommendation.
Using a VPN that went somewhere else?
Yep, there was actually less than 10 of those. I was one of them, just to verify that, but other than that, most of them pop up in Bridgewater.
Great, thank you.
Yep. And then there were two open-ended questions at the end, where we let people and residents of Bridgewater respond however they wanted, and we got some very colorful responses, but some really helpful ones as well. The survey was open for 37 total days. We extended it past the original 30 days. We wanted to try to get a few more responses, and we got an additional, I think, seven out of the extra couple of days, so one a day. I'll take it. It was from September 2020 through October 7th, 2020, and there was 114 total responses. And I will say that some individuals responded more than once to the open-ended question, so the total won't equal 114, but that's why. So the first question, are you a resident of town of Bridgewater? All respondents indicated that they were residents of the town and provided their last name or street address, or listed it as NA. The NA ones are the ones that we tried to track down their IP address to make sure that they were, in fact, residents of Bridgewater. Not that it really matters, but it's good information to have. Of the respondents, 44 answered that they had, in fact, served or on an elected or appointed board for the town committee. This included the town council, finance committee, citizens advisory committee, library trustee, a member of the library trustees, and a few others, but those are kind of the big four. And then 70 respondents said that, no, they weren't. They were just residents of Bridgewater. I do tend to speak really fast. If I get out of hand, somebody, please, just slow me down. But I'll keep going here unless anybody has questions. Sweet. The first question we asked, once we ascertained whether the individual was a resident of Bridgewater, was how familiar are you with the town charter? It was pretty heavily in favor of somewhat familiar, and then kind of split between very and not familiar at all, as shown on the chart here. Not too surprising. How would you rate the overall operation of the town of Bridgewater? Overwhelmingly adequate, at 74 out of 114 responses. The excellent four kind of watched each other out at 13 and 15 respectively, but I'll take the adequate. So for here, it's more charter-specific questions that we'd ask. So should town councilors receive an annual stipend of $3,000 for service? One thing I do want to point out here is that the subcommittee that did the survey talked about whether or not to include the $3,000 as a firm benchmark or not. And that was after a good deal of discussion, we decided that a numeric figure helped people make a decision rather than some open-ended response. Unfortunately, we got a pretty split vote between the yeses and the nos around the 3,000. At 45, voting yes, that they should receive a stipend, and 40 was saying, no, they shouldn't. And then there were a good number of people that chose not to answer this question based on the lack of information they had. And the responses that we got to that in the open-ended questions were generally, I don't know if $3,000 is too much, too little, or just right. So, do with that what you will. Should the town clerk become an appointed position? This, we did put some performance context there, currently an elected position. Overwhelmingly, and I think this is the biggest landslide of an answer, was no. And leave it as an elected position. Should a recall provision, the next question, should a recall, an election recall provision be added to the town charter? 72 said yes, 10 no's. Again, pretty clear, based on 114 responses, what the residents of Bridgewater want to see town charter-wise related to an election recall provision.
Mr. Golden?
Yep.
Are we doing questions during this, or are we doing it after?
So we do have a Q and A slide at the end, but if it's
Okay, I'll wait.
Now, I can do that?
No, I can wait. Thank you.
Okay. Should the town employees be allowed to serve on town committees? We had no, generally. I will say, so when we looked at the nos and we looked at the open responses, there was a decent amount of people that had the caveat of no, unless they are also a resident of the town. But if they're not a resident, then the answer is no. Question nine was, should term limit provision of the town charter be amended? This one was surprising, that there was not enough information to answer the question. So I think, as a larger group, both subcommittee and the Charter Review Committee, when we take these responses back, we needed to look at the education a little bit, and maybe have provided some more information, since a majority of the responses were that they don't have enough information. But if you do take the yes-no's, if here's a yes, there's a clear winner, twice as many respondents saying, yes, there should be an amendment to it versus not. 10, should the requirements for wet signatures be changed from 100 to 75 to be on the ballot? That's as split as you can get, between 47 and 46, for a yes-no respectively, with much, many fewer respondents as they don't have enough information, or do they not want to share their responses? So here's the fun ones to me. The questions 11 and 12, we start getting to the open-ended responses. So number 11 was, are there any other comments or recommendations you would like the Charter Review Committee to consider? So what the subcommittee did is we tried to break them down into topical categories, and these rank from the top to the bottom, so charter changes. And it runs the gamut of things that are mentioned previously in our question set, as well as some other things. I'm going to go through some more specifics in a minute. Town councils, kind of the same deal. You will notice at the bottom, the zeros, schools, utilities, and traffic. It's because we tried to use the same columns and groups for questions 11 and 12, which will make more sense in a second. And then 12 was, we got a ton of responses on this one, and it's more than 114, which I referenced earlier. What do you think the most important issues facing the town of Bridgewater are? The top five are land development, town government, town general, traffic, and schools. In descending order of most commented, and when I say most commented, it's some go this way, some go that way. I'm going to cite land development specifically. One respondent said that the town is overdeveloped, and one respondent said the town is severely underdeveloped, and that's why no one comes here. So, this far on the opposite side of the spectrum as you can get. So, what the subcommittee did, and then the larger committee did, is we tried to break down the responses into things that we think can be, that are charter-impacting and non-charter-impacting data that we gathered from the survey. Because the things that we can't address with the charter, like traffic, for example, still something we wanted to look at in the whole. So I'm just going to kind of talk through the chart for a second. So charter-impacting, we'll start in that column. So town council, support for, and I will do questions here, this might be easier. Support for keeping but enhancing term limits. Town council, reevaluate the composition and representation with a focus on diversity and inclusion, which I think comes up in a few agenda items later anyway on the town council's agenda. Town government, enhancing overall internal and external communication. And the town charter impact on that one, there was some good discussion on that. It was finding ways to make the town councilers yourselves all more approachable and accessible to the town residents, particularly in this time of COVID. And ways to do that, and the charter review committee did take the opportunity to go talk to some other towns to see how they're doing that. And if you all have questions on that, I will field those in a minute. Town government, increasing employee accountability and oversight. So all things that we think could be charter, we can tie specifically to a section of the charter. Non-charter-impacting, so not really a whole lot directed towards town council from the survey. Town government, more transparency and improving citizen engagement and outreach, kind of ties to the charter impact one, but might not necessarily be there. Town government, diverse representation in staffing and committee composition. There are a few survey respondents that recommended or articulated the desire to have diversity-specific committees in the town to try to bolster that a little bit. Townwide, fostering a welcome environment for diversity, inclusion, and equity, school budget, and improved schooling system. Again, technically not charter-impacting things, but that ties a lot back to one of the most important issues facing Bridgewater today. And then land development, maximizing the efficient use of land for residential and commercial development, and what that would look like going forward. So I know I kind of breezed through that. I think dialogue is sometimes more helpful. Ed, I'm going to throw it to you, I think, for a minute.
Yep.
And then we'll go to the Q and A.
Sounds good. Thanks, Tom. One thing I do want to mention is that we have all the raw data for the survey, and some of that data, we believe, can be used for other purposes, such as updating administrative code possibly, and maybe some other things. So we're in the process of packaging that now, so that we can put it out somewhere for the public to have access to that. So that's something we'll release, you know, probably in the next couple of weeks. Though in addition to the survey, which we have completed, one of the main things that we did initially as a committee was, we wanted to identify and gather data. So the survey was part of that. We held three public forums back in September and October, and we also issued a questionnaire to key town personnel. And basically, many of the department heads and some other folks within the departments, 21 of them in total, sent a questionnaire on October 22nd. We asked them to respond back by November 6th. Right now, we have received eight responses back, which is about a 40% response rate. So I'm hoping in the next week or two, we can get a few more of those back. The information that is in this questionnaire is a little different than what was in the survey, but from an employee's perspective, it gives us another view of what potential changes to the charter we could make based on, you know, the way the town government operates today from an employee perspective. In terms of the overall recommendation process, we completed a fairly in-depth review of the 2014 Charter Review Committee's recommendations, as well as the 2017 rules. As well as the twenty-seventeen rules and procedures of subcommittee. In that comparison, we created a spreadsheet that looks at both and looks at the commonality as well as the, the differences between those two. Right now we're conducting a very detailed review of the charter. I believe right now we're on article two. We're going word by word, line by line of the charter and looking at what we deem as possible, possible for recommendations. In addition to looking at that, we're also investigating options for how some of these recommendations will be rolled out. As many of you remember, the last, you know, the last rollout back in twenty nineteen. Was an all or nothing rollout, which failed at the, at the ballot. So this time we'd like to explore some other options to improve the timeframes. As well as additional choices for voters over the last process. So in that vein, we're looking at potentially phasing some of the recommendations. One example of that would be to package all of the controversial. Recommendations into one special act. And then put the non-controversials into another special act, or even use some additional process amendment process or something different. To get those things through. And last but not least, you know, we're prioritizing our recommendations and the way we want to roll those out. We want to align that with the process. So we haven't, you know, we haven't finalized the process. Obviously, that's something the council is going to have to. Make a final decision on, but we're having discussions now with, with Jason. And, and Sean has been involved briefly on that as well to, to begin to plan for that in early two, twenty twenty-one. So that's it for the overall status as we, we continue to meet twice a month. And we'll continue to move forward. So. Tom, I'll turn it back to you for any additional questions on the survey.
I guess I open it up to the group.
And or whoever's got control, if you could bring, just bring back the everyone screen, because it's nice to be able to see everybody.
I'm just going to stop sharing. How about that?
Thank you. All right. Any questions? Mr. Wood.
Thank you. Couple of questions. So I'll trust these to Tom, you first. I, I'm surprised by the limited number of people that responded. You, you know, you, I know you made a couple efforts to get out on Facebook and whatnot, and. There was other issue, I, I think you listed one hundred and forty-four responses or something in that neighborhood. And then you said forty-four were on committees. And then, and then in one of the questions about. About knowledge about the, the charter, it was kind of split in half, you know, that some, a lot, a lot of people didn't. You know, I, I suggested a couple of months ago, maybe doing a postcard to get the word out more because a hundred out of. What do we have now sixteen thousand registered voters and twenty-eight thousand citizens in town? Is really a statistical, you know, just, just an error rate, not, not, not a good survey. So the first question, Tom, is, is. If you were to do this again, how would you do it differently to, to reach more than a hundred people?
So there's a, in my, Ed, you can tell me to shut up whenever you need me to. But so there's a few things I would do. One, I would make this process longer. So I know the charter review committee in general is working on a. A rather constricted goal and timeline. If you want more survey responses, you need more outreach. So A, I think the postcard is a great idea. I think things like tabling out in front of campus plaza or in the town green would also be helpful. I think time was the biggest factor for us, and that coupled with COVID made it increasingly difficult. I probably, like in a normal time, I would have sat in town hall. More than once a week, maybe twice a week on different days, different times to try to get people. The opportunity to see the survey in person. We had reached out to the library trustees to see if we could do anything with them and getting it. At the library, but we, we came to the consensus that that really wasn't going to be effective either. So I think that, that's my, kind of my answer. I think the times, the time span like calendar wise plus COVID. Those two things together kind of put us behind the eight ball.
All right. Follow up to that is. One of the, one of the questions dealt with. With the, let's see. The, the stipends, right? And so I don't remember, I was at one of your meetings. Stipends, I, I was surprised and I didn't really want to say anything before you put the, the questions together, but I was surprised that. You only used one number, which was numbers that's been running around for several years now, instead of giving a variety of. Numbers, so you could collect a variety of responses and get better feedback. From the people that answered that question. Would, would you change that if you were to do it again?
In my opinion. No. I think having a hard number of yes, no makes it, you're going to get a more definitive response. So I did talk to my colleague of mine, I guess he's a colleague now, he's a friend, one of the colleague, I guess, in a different municipality in Massachusetts, and they're running through their charter as well. And they're going to do the multiple options. Of stipend. And I think they were going to do twenty-five hundred, five thousand, seventy-five hundred. And my, the dialogue I had with that individual was, what if you get mixed bag and split down the middle? It's not as helpful going forward. So I see the merits of both. I think since that the three thousand has been thrown around before and is comparable to some other municipalities that do pay town counselors, that's why we stuck with it. I think if we had asked the question, should they receive a stipend or not, should town cultures receive a stipend or not? We would get yes, nos, and then you have to figure out what that number is. And we were trying to give the town respondents an opportunity to have a bright line in the sand.
Okay, final question, I'll turn it back. This is more directed toward Ed. Ed, you and I don't see eye to eye on a number of different topics. Couple of them were on the, on the questions there on the charter. On June twenty-fourth, a few days before the election. You self-identified as the chair of the charter review committee and then wrote about the consequence of the election. A reasonable, reasonable person would say that your essay was in support of term limits. And then a reasonable person would say that would probably judge. That your essay was a breach of the open meeting law. At a minimum, it taints the charter review process. Do you think that essay had any influence on this, on this survey at all?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgibbons, I believe you had some questions.
I, I can wait if other people have them. I mean, they're more technical than anything.
Okay, Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, a question for Ed. Ed, the, the twenty-nineteen ballot initiative. Did pose, of course, several controversial issues. And I think notably, I think we would all agree, they would include the. Question of the election of a town clerk. Term limits for the council and the issue of stipend for counselors. And I think the results of the questionnaire that you've illuminated for us tonight. Really bear out that those are still areas of controversy. But nonetheless, I, my question really goes to your point that. Perhaps a useful mechanism would be to, to bundle together the, the controversial and the non-controversial items as you characterize them. And I, I see that, you know, in my view, that would only pave the way for the, the same result. That, you know. We, we would wind up with nothing being selected as a, in the, in the way of a charter amendment. Do you have thoughts about that?
Yeah. So I mean, there are very, very diverse set of recommendations that will come out and. Many of them, the non-controversial ones, you know, provide value to the town. Those I think are ones that, you know, we can, we can get in fairly quickly if we use the right process. And, you know, will. You know, won't cause a lot of consternation with the public. The controversial ones, the problem the last time was, was all or nothing. You either voted for the charter in its complete state or not. And this time around, I think what we'll do is we'll, we'll recommend to take those individual items like. The stipend, for example, and that'll be a separate question. So we may end up having a special act that has a half a dozen or some number of independent questions. Where the public can vote yes or no in each question.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
With Jason's guidance on that, we'll hopefully we'll be able to structure something that passes legal muster. You know, and also is clear to the public so that they understand what they're voting on.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mrs. Lo, should you have something? I don't, I.
Thanks.
Yep.
Present, presenters, thank you for taking the time and doing this as a former charter review member. I know how, how much work goes into it and the line by line, which I don't think you were going to do before, but I guess now you've seen the, the value in it. So I'm looking forward to the third round, having the original, having what was presented back in two thousand and fifteen. I believe. If not, or fourteen, and then having your updates for us to review. One thing I did want to touch on in the questions. You know, we've had this in the town before where people like. To say yes or no. So some of them were definitive by the one extra vote. So if it's forty-nine to sixty or fifty or right against the cups, we know. Are you going to take what the majority said, or you're going to kind of have this? Kind of gray area to then continue to debate to Mr. Chase's point, you know, we're kind of back into. Just kind of moving things around again and even thinking about putting all the controversial things together, then they'll just fail. And maybe one of those controversial things should have passed. So I'll let you answer that. And then to Mr. Rollins as a follow-up, once they provide their answer. Is do we have a better process than what we were able to go through in twenty nineteen? I know we went into it thinking one thing and getting another. So I'd love to hear what updates we know as we go forward in twenty twenty-one.
So Tom, can I take the answer to this? You mind? Great question, Aisha. So keep in mind that the survey was only one form of data gathering that we did. We also have a lot of data from our public forums. We have the employee questionnaires that are providing some good information as well, although we only get a few of those, but hopefully we'll get more. And then the committee itself, you know, we all have our own opinions. So. We at least have, you know, four data sources that we're going to be using as we begin to discuss the recommendations. So if we have an item in the survey that's close in terms of yeses and nos, it's kind of a split on the survey. We may find that the public forum or even people that are joining our meetings, we have, you know, public comment at our meetings, both at the beginning and the end of the meetings. People join and give their feedback that way as well. So we're tracking all this information and that's going to help guide our process.
And can I add one more thing to that? We also have people that have not attended meetings, didn't respond to the survey, but have sent the, the committee. Information in general and just said, hey, like FYI. And we all, and I think there's a standard item on our agenda every week that is anybody's walk, like public comment. And it has been used, like Ed said, so. It's, the survey is not the end all be all, nor are the public forums, like at any point if a citizen wants to come up and be like, hey, chuckles, you need to listen to us, like. We're happy to do it.
Great. Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of.
The second part of my question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Rollins to you. My apologies, Mrs. Lo.
No worries.
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. So the, I guess you can start with the basic premise that for the most part. Amending a charter is a somewhat cumbersome process, right? So I guess you can start from that premise. There are some avenues we can take depending on what you all decide. Is something you want to ultimately go to the voters. And depending on what the actual content of the items that you're looking to push forward as an amendment are. That we may be able to streamline that process. So it is entirely fact specific and it's also somewhat within all of your discretion, right? So you all may say, this particular thing, we want to go to the voters, even if we, it doesn't need to go to the voters. So. Based on that, I'm, I'm going to be deferential to that so long as we follow the proper process. So to a great degree, you all are going to have to kind of come up with. This is what, as a consensus or as a two-thirds consensus, we want to do. And then we will find the most efficient way to do that, right? It, it's, it's an impossible question to answer without knowing what we're proposing, right? And so my view at this stage is the CRC is going to come to you all with recommendations. Someone is going to sponsor some of them, someone's going to not sponsor some of them. I, I don't know, it's, it's up to you guys. So once that process begins, that's a good time. For whoever the sponsor is to have a conversation with me about what the most efficient way to do this is. And maybe you want it to be efficient or maybe you don't, right? So. It, it's heavily dependent on what you all are, are viewing the process as, as a council, right? Some things can get stuck in committee for a long time for various reasons. I, I don't know all of them. But we can be as efficient or not as efficient as you want to be, but I, I think. The best way to start that is whatever the recommendations are, you all take the recommendations. Think about if any of you want to sponsor any of the recommendations. If you do, that's a good opportunity to start with me in figuring out. Let's do it in this fashion, right? And then we can bring that through that, even that part of the process. We can bring through this so that maybe some of you feel we should do it differently, or maybe you feel that's a good way to do it. But I think that's the point in time, it really needs to be brought up to me so that we have it from the beginning instead of. You know, we're at the very end, we're in the eleventh hour and we're kind of stuck with the way it is at this point, right? That's, that's, I think, the, the thing I would say is probably the most important at this stage.
Anything else, Mrs. Lo, before I move on to Mr. Gallagher?
That was, those are the two things. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions quickly and thank you, Ed and Tom and your committee for the work that you're doing. I appreciate it. Is it, is it fair to say that if the survey is, was heavily. You know. Heavily answered in a certain way and, and the forums are heavily. Discuss in a certain way, regardless of the feeling of your committee that you might just let the issue. Go and say, okay, that's enough sampling. We won't put that issue before the voters. Or is it possibly you could still do that? I think that. You know, the survey seemed to have some close votes. And maybe those are the ones that should, should, you know, get more information. You know, sampling, the sampling might have been small, but it's a sampling when they do surveys for. For votes, for polls, if you will, the sampling is very, very small, considered the number of people that can vote. And if you go back to the twenty nineteen election when. Sixteen thousand people had an opportunity to vote, I bet that sampling was pretty small as well. So. I guess the question is, is do, do you think that if the overwhelming. Indication you're getting is to leave that particular issue alone, you'll leave the issue alone, or you still might put it before the voters for a larger sampling of a decision?
I, I, yeah, good question, Dennis. I think it's going to be, you know, question by question, to be honest with you. It's hard to say on a general level. What we're going to do in a case where if we have a split. Opinion on a question between all the different data sources that we've taken. How we will, how we'll, I will come to a decision on that right now. You know, we're still. Still finalizing the data and I guess how we're going to use that data, we're going to have more discussions about that in the weeks ahead.
Yeah. And I, and then when it comes to the, what is your timeframe then as far as when you think you'll? Have some recommendations before the council to try to get some of those on the April twenty twenty-one ballot?
Well, so our initial thought was that we would go in two phases. Phase one would be all those non-controversial recommendations, you know, the spelling, the spelling, the grammatical. Changes, all these things that are more administrative in nature. We would have all those completed by the middle end of February. And then we would have all the controversial items, which would be phase two, we would have those ready by the end of April. Pretty tight schedule, but again, does it make sense to do it in phases right now or not? That's why our, our feeling is we would kind of like to know the process ahead of time. So that we could properly prioritize the recommendations rather than just go in sequence. Through the charter and then end in May and say, okay, we've gone through the charter, here's all our recommendations and just hand them over to the council. And then counsel, you know, beside everything. We want to add some value other than just making recommendations.
Right. Sometimes things come down to time and with the winter coming and everything like that, you know. April comes pretty quick sometimes and that, right now, that's the only election scheduled for the town in twenty twenty-one is the town election. The following year you have obviously your, your state election again. So. As far as you're keeping in mind of not trying to avoid a special election. And maybe there'll be something on a, you know, a dead, a dead exclusion for a. and maybe there'll be something on a, you know, a dead exclusion for a fire station too, at some point, will come, will come forward. So no, thank you for your work. I appreciate everything you do. And I'm looking forward to some, some recommendations for some changes. Yes. Now, the, the final question that I have is-
If I, if I, if I may quickly, just to follow up on the, to answer your question, Counselor Gallagher, a little bit on the timing, just in reality, the way, the process that we typically follow, if it's something that you as a counselor are going to determine are going to end up going to the voters, we do it through the special act process. I would say there's less than zero chance that anything, if even if you received a recommendation today, that would be ready to be on a ballot by April. That would mean it went through your entire process, it went to the state house, it went through the state house process, it went through amendments at the state house, then came back to you all and got voted on for the April. I, I just, I want to be realistic with you all too, that, that, that timeframe is, and that's why I started my conversation, that it's cumbersome, right? They're, depending on what you do, right? If, if it's administrative stuff, we can talk about that. But just in terms of substantive things that you all want to send to the voters, if you want a realistic timeline, April would not be one.
I don't know. I think it's doable, but I know last time it wasn't, but things can move through the state house quickly if they want to. That's, that's, but my, my final question, I guess, is just to, just to kind of put a clarification out there because I, I hear this from time to time and I'm sure, I'm sure you do, and I'm sure my fellow counselors hear it as well. As far as ditching the charter 100% and going back to the select reform of government, is that was a moot discussion? That's not even on the table? Was that ever suggested? And we won't be going there? Is that fair to say?
I will say that came up a couple of times in the responses-
Yeah.
On the survey, I think, I'm trying to look quickly. It was sub 10, but I don't have a hard number on that.
I think the, the responses where you could tell the individual was very frustrated with many aspects of, of not only the charter and the government, they were basically saying, the solution is to undo everything and go back to the old ways. That's kind of what, what they were saying. As the committee, I think we're pretty unanimous in not even looking, looking in that direction. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Mr. Gallagher, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Or, first of all, thank you, Mr. Ivaldi and Mr. Golden for doing all the work. I appreciate that very much. I just want to run through, like, I've got, I'm looking down because I'm looking on my phone on your, on your presentation. So I appreciate that. I'm on number six. Should the town clerk be come in appointed position? What was the opinion of the, you, you said you reconciled the charter review committee and the rules and procedures committee? What was the recommendation of those two when they did that?
So one was for and one was against.
Okay, that's not how I remembered it, but that's why I asked the question. And what was the original recommendation of the charter committee when we did this back in the day?
Well, if you remember, it was presented at town meeting to make the, the position appointed. But at the time, the town clerk got up and spoke and town meeting voted to put an amendment into the charter to keep it appointed.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Elected.
Elected, I'm sorry. Thanks, Sean.
Question six. I, I just wanted to know where we were relative to that. I, I read the, I read the data and everything. I'm, I'm good with that. This is actually, I'm, I'm on number seven now. And this is actually more a question for Mr. Rollins. Should an election recall provision be added to the town charter? Mr. Rollins, do we have a recall provision in the town today?
I believe we do have one in there. I don't have the charter in front of me, but I'm nearly positive we do.
Well, it's not in the charter, I don't believe, but it was found to be implicit by what happened.
Yep, right.
So, so it doesn't need to be added. It's there, correct?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's already been something that's been addressed. And certainly they can, you can amend it to add it into the charter explicitly.
Right, right. But it's, it's there. We have a recall provision. I didn't want anyone to leave this meeting thinking we don't have a recall provision.
Councilors have been recalled, so absolutely true.
Tonight. Okay. Yeah, that's great. Whoops, I'm sorry. My phone just flipped from landscape to portrait, so. You, you guys, you guys know how technology works. All right. I, I can't remember. I can't remember which slide it was, something about signatures around nomination papers. And, and this is one I've spoken with the town clerk about a little bit. And I think it's especially important these days with COVID. Do we want, do we want candidates walking around right after the first of the year, asking for signatures everywhere? And we're talking about wet signatures. Are there other ways that we can leverage technology to, to sign nomination papers and to get people into a, you know, to say, yes, we, we have enough people in the town supporting candidate A, B, C, or D, that we want them to, to be part of the discussion?
So I guess the question on that, Tim, I'm not sure that that's really a charter specific thing that we would handle in the charter. I mean, that, that's more of a how, a how rather than a what, right? The charter really identifies the whats and the hows are carried out either through the administrative code or through some other process or procedure.
And I, I understand that. And, and thank you, Mr. Ivaldi for saying that. But the question did say wet signatures, so I didn't-
Reducing the number from 100 to 75.
Did the requirement for wet signatures be changed from 100 to 75? Wet signatures. That was what I was asking about. Should we be thinking further ahead to say, how can we engage more people in the town and not just ask people to sign nomination papers in person, especially in the time of COVID? And how could we do it perhaps electronically? Perhaps you have a, an email list of people in Bridgewater of 1,000 people that you could just send out, hey, can you set, set, sign this electronically? Send it to the town clerk. It's all, I, I'm not, I, I'm not asking for anything. I'm just saying, should we codify that in the charter? That's a question I'd ask you to think about.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And then, you know, I, I appreciate the, the, the last few questions around, what are the most important things facing the town? You know, because that gives us a good context to understand, okay, what are people really looking at? And, you know, I think that can help guide you guys in where are you looking at to focus your attention in the next few months, weeks, et cetera. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Tim. Any other questions? So I, I'm just going to give my, a little bit of my two cents input. So Mr. Ivaldi, Mr. Golden, first, thank you very much. And also, you know, thank you to the committee. I can only imagine the caloric expenditure for the meetings, the surveys, you know, things of that nature. So thank you very much for that. I, I don't have specific questions per se. I think my fellow counselors probably touched upon the vast majority. And I'm just going to make this as, as a statement as a counselor. I just, I have the same input as everyone else from that perspective. But I think overall, and, and, you know, Mr. Rollins has some great points. If I were to give you some feedback, I would say the committee, I would expect them to come to us with their recommendations and not classify them as controversial versus non controversial. I would expect them to say, what is, what do you hear as the top priority for things that the town wants to look at potentially adding, changing, deleting, whatever the case may be? Once that comes into us, I would expect, and I would hope that the counselors would support those recommendations from the committee like anyone else. It's not a guarantee. But then from that perspective, then we do have to scope out what it is that we have to go through the process like Mr. Rollins said, in order to make that happen. What I don't, what I wouldn't want is for all of you to look at the easiest things to address to get them done by April and then put other things on the back burner that may be much more important for people because it takes longer and it takes a lot more work. So again, that's just input from my, my perspective from there as well. I will echo Council Loesch in regards to, I feel that the questions that are put out there need to be individual questions that people are able to answer yea or nay. I think, I'm, I'm just saying, the way we did it last time, the all or nothing, I, I don't think that was fair to anyone who walked into the voting booth. And again, I'm giving you my personal opinion. But when, when you guys are ready to make those recommendations, obviously, you know, Will, reach out to me, we'll get that going. But you all drive the ship until you get to the point when you're ready to execute on the recommendations. And then it's our responsibility to put it in front of the voters. But we also have to define the mechanism and the process in order to get done. You know, I, I'm not going to speak for, you know, Mrs. Hunt, but if it does require us to maybe allocate some potential expenses for a special election with everything going on, I would be in full support of that as well. Because if we're going to do this, let's do it right. But also make sure that we have all the resources available to get it done. So that's, that's, that's hopefully my, my three minutes. That's about it, guys. I very much appreciate your time and keep, keep it going.
Mr. President, if I could ask, gudge, follow up?
I actually, Mr. Wood, I think, I think we're going to move on, unless we have anything else.
I, I have a couple of important questions. I have a couple of important questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
You know, one, one of, Ed, one of your responses was about to, back to Mr. Fitzgibbons about the, the town clerk. And, you know, if you go back to the, the recommendations of the last charter review committee, recommendation was clearly to make it appointed again. And that's what the rules and procedures leaned on. And that's where the recommendation came from. So when you said it disagreed, it didn't disagree at all. It was, it was CRC said yes and, and, and the rules and procedures said yes. So, so I, I think that's one thing. The other thing is administrative. I haven't found any minutes of your meetings. There's nothing posted online yet. So had you started posting those, those minutes yet?
I, Josh is our secretary and I assumed he was posting them. So that's, I'll have to follow up with him. All of our agendas are posted. I just assumed all of our minutes were being posted as well. Maybe, maybe they're just not in the place that you were looking for them, Bill.
Right. Where agenda and minutes are usually found on the web. Okay, thank you.
I'll ask them. Thanks.
All right. Again, Mr. Ivaldi, Mr. Golden, thank you very much for your time. As always, if you guys need anything from us, anyone on the committee, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Thanks for the time.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to town managers' report. Mr. Dutton, we're, we're patiently waiting your streamlined report. And you're on mute.
Isn't that preferable? No, just kidding. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll, I'll run through these fairly quickly. On the Mitchell School, I don't have anything new. The committee has not met in some time because the, it's a little bit of a quiet period as bidders prepare their bids. The whole, the whole school project is out to bids. As I mentioned last time, all the subs and the general contractors have been prequalified. So we, we know at least who, the range of people that will be bidding on the project. The next meeting, I can tell you, has been delayed by one week because additional, an additional week was granted to, to, for the bidders to complete their bids. So the meeting is now scheduled for December 14th at 5:30 PM. And again, open to the public. And at that point, then the committee will be reviewing the bids and then voting to approve the award. So construction still scheduled to begin technically in December, realistically in January, but still with a July 8, 2022 completion date. So again, all, everybody can find all the material they want to find at bridwaterschoolproject.com and happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Just to be clear, the one week delay in the meeting does not cause a delay in opening the school, correct, Mr. Dutton?
Does not, does not cause a delay in opening the school or the construction schedule, correct?
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, moving on to COVID-19 update.
COVID-19 update, we do have, as of today, 16 community cases, actually 19 community cases. We had 16 yesterday and then we got information that there were three more this afternoon. And we do have several staff exposures. We've got five staff in quarantine. And we know of one additional positive COVID case among, among your employees. So, so that is a little bit of a concern, but we have been there before and, and knock on wood, that employee will be fine. The DOC has 10 cases, BSU has 16 in quarantine and three in isolation. So clearly there's been a bit of an uptick in the numbers and we're watching that quite carefully. And it's not unexpected, I can tell you that. The, the medical professionals have been telling us that we have certainly not seen the peak of the second, the second wave, which was expected for some time, but, but that is coming. So Town Hall is currently open, as you know. Right now, we don't have any intention on closing down, certainly. But, but I can tell you that several offices are on a limited schedule due to staff quarantine. So I do ask people for some patience when trying to come into the building to get things done. And certainly, as I mentioned last week, anyone who can do their business remotely over the phone, internet or otherwise electronically, please, please continue to do so as we try to, try to keep the traffic through Town Hall to a minimum. On a positive note, we did receive our second of 13 CARES Act reimbursements last week from the county treasurer. And, and we've so far, I think, very wisely utilized our allocation of CARES funding. And Tony Solomati will be at your meeting on December 1st. And certainly, I think, give you a deeper dive into the specifics of, of what we're doing with, with the CARES Act funding. So that, that is coming on December 1st. So happy to answer any questions there as well.
Any questions on COVID, COVID-19? Um, so for the December 1st meeting, for, that will make four weeks left in the CARES money, which I fully expect to disappear wherever it goes on December 30th. So I'm, I'm assuming that Tony's going to be prepared if we've got anything in flight when we're going to apply for it. My understanding is it's the application date that will qualify. So we could conceivably apply on December 30th and still be able, eligible for that funds if we get paid in January, correct?
Correct. Nope, that's correct. We do. I can tell you with a lot of our purchases, technology specifically, it's challenging because you can imagine every municipality, every state in the country is, is in the same boat. So technology manufacturers are quite behind. And so generally, they do, they do not take payment until your order is fulfilled. And, and this may be a case where some operating procedures are going to have to change in order to accept payment because in order to qualify for CARES reimbursement, you actually have to commit the funds and expend the funds so that you can, you can ask for reimbursement. So, so there's some issues like that and Tony can explain those a little bit more. But we're working very hard with suppliers to make sure, ironically, make sure that we can pay them in time in order to seek reimbursement.
I've, I've, from another town, I heard the same thing in regards to begging people to take a prepayment, which is kind of crazy. Okay.
Yeah.
Fire building committee update.
The fire, fire station building committee did meet last night and they did adopt the space needs plan, which is a critical hurdle and, and allows the architect to continue on developing a, a plan. They also had some very prominent preliminary discussion on a possible location for the new station. That is actually the next step to, to identify a pseudo- That is actually the next step to, to identify a pseudo, a handful of suitable locations. That can be well vetted by the, by the, by the engineer, the architect rather. And find eventual site and solution there. Also combined in the next step is how and whether BSU fits into any of these eventual solutions. And, and so we'll be having more discussions with BSU on how they might fit in as well. The only other thing I had on that was we will be creating. Brad. When comes up for air, we'll be creating a webpage which is specifically for the overall project and we'll, we'll include all the prior reports on the, on the current fire station. And certainly pictures and videos, which we've got plenty of, just to sort of let the public know. And I realize the public generally does not frequent the inside of the fire station on School Street, but pictures and, and the videos do tell a thousand. Words. So, so we'll be putting all of that up on, on a specific webpage designed for the project in the, in the very near future. So that is coming. So that's, that's what I have on the fire station. Happy to answer questions about that.
Any questions on the committee? All right, seeing none, moving to update on diversity, equity and inclusion.
So I wanted to give the council just a sort of a little update, not, not terribly in-depth update, but. I wanted to, one, give you a reminder on what we're doing internally. I think as I've mentioned before, we've completely revamped our hiring process to make it what's referred to as a blind system. In other words, we don't. We don't know the names and addresses of candidates that come in prior to their selection for an interview. So we, we are judging based solely on, on qualifications and experience. That's, that's the limit of what we have to look at. And that in and of itself has, has resulted, I can't say it's, it's the. Was certainly wasn't the driving force of a revamp of the hiring process, but we have created. Increased diversity throughout the town. I can't say it's a huge increase, but, but it is a first step that we're quite proud of. And I, I haven't made a big deal of the. Of this fact, but, but we do, just based on, on what we've done with the hiring process, and I, I think the council should know this. We have actually been asked to give advice to a lot of other communities throughout Massachusetts. On best practices around the hiring process and certain diversity issues around the hiring process. So. So that's, you know, I think quite a, quite an accomplishment and certainly, you know, I thank Kim Williams, the Assistant Town Manager. For a lot of that. She sits on the State Association's Diversity and Inclusion Committee and brings back ideas. And as much as she brings back ideas, she, she also sort of spreads some of the best practices that we've adopted throughout the state. So. So that's, that's something we're doing. And again, that's more on the internal side. Externally, we have, as you may know, the counselors, I think, have gotten an invitation. Hopefully. You'll be getting another one from your council clerk this evening or tomorrow. But we have some board and committee training, which the council, as I, as I suggest, is more than welcome and encouraged to attend. That's on Wednesday, December 2nd at 4:00 PM, runs about an hour. And it's cultural awareness and diversity training, and that is. Open to all our boards and committees. So we've sent an invitation to all of the board and committee folks. And also, I think the council's gotten an invitation, but you'll get another one shortly. You can also go to the town's website. Training page, the town website's training page and also sign up. So many ways to, to get there. Also, as you've probably seen, I've posted a notice asking resident citizens interested in contributing to an ad hoc committee. On diversity and inclusion issues. I'm hoping to get that committee up and running by the end of the calendar year, and I also anticipate. Giving the committee, you know, probably a small number of, of sort of quantifiable achievable goals so that, that we can. Kind of begin this process very methodically with, with some, you know, quick achievable successes. I think that temptation, you know, anytime we set up a committee, it's usually because we've got. Issues to contend with and the temptation is to just take a big, this big enormous ball of issues and just say, here, fix it. I don't want to do that to, to the folks that, that volunteer for this particular committee or any committee for that matter. Because I think it's, it's an issue or these are issues, societal issues that we need to step through very methodically and, and very. Well, very methodically. I, I just want to give them simple instructions to start off and then, and then build upon that obviously, but. But we will, I anticipate the, accepting the offer or, or, you know, accepting the off BSU's offer of resources. And expertise to help that committee get started, but I do caution that, you know, we're dealing with. We are dealing with a town, you know, town issues versus campus issues. And, and I think obviously, you know, BSU resources understand that. But, but, but they'll cater, hopefully cater some of their advice and guidance. To, to a more. Probably, quite frankly, a less diverse town than, than they have a campus. So. So that is, that is what we've got going on, on that front. But again, happy to answer any questions you have on that one too.
Any, any questions for Mr. Dutton? Mrs. Loesch.
Hi, thank you. Just really quickly on that, thank you for the training. Looking forward to that next week. People are going to probably question the difference between your ad hoc committee versus the one that Dennison or Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Rushton. Proposed a month or two ago. So just wanted to get clarification on that and then where. The council can move with legislation to, you know, making it something that is permanent, which is. The goal within like the administrative code to see if there was an update on that piece of legislation. Which you probably don't have an update for, but just kind of bringing it full circle.
That, no, I, I appreciate that question and, and Council Loesch. This, this committee. I, I see this committee as sort of the, the first step to get to legislation that can, can bring this back. So we can bring this, the, the permanence of this committee back to the council. And I think it's going to be helpful that we have. Sort of some successes under our belt and some direction and, and as provided in part by the committee itself. Back to the council so that the council can really narrow down, you know, what the mission statement is going to be of this. Committee and then, and then build that into the admin code as a, as a permanent standing committee. So I, I see this as the beginning. You know, this is sort of the, the genesis and then, and then we're going to see it grow. To the point where it's right for, for council action to, to adopt it as part of the, as part of the admin code.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Dutton? Okay. So did you cover D and E on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. No, we're only going to be on D, but you morphed into E, which is fine by me. Um. All right. So if any councils have anything for Mr. Dutton for a next meeting, please let, let us know. We'll get on the agenda and. Keep in mind, we have a December 1st meeting, so it's a quick turnaround to include anything on that meeting. All right, thank you, Mr. Dutton. I don't have any discussions. I didn't, I was going on the assumption you don't have any. Any committee reports? This is Loesch.
Just a quick update on the review. We had some tardy submissions, myself included. But hoping to get all of that tallied and back out to everyone. With the same timeline that we had outlined at the top of the fall, I believe, back in September, to get this. Back to everybody, most likely won't be for Tuesday. I thought we had one more week. But it will probably be for that second meeting in December and then hopefully that will tie up with potentially some goals that we could discuss. At that meeting for 2021. So just wanted to let folks know that we have not completely forgotten about it. And we should be tying that up pretty quickly. And then the, the charge for the committee going forward, there were questions about how we got to this process as it is. So we might be doing some unpacking. And some, we've, looking back at our recent history of what we had said we were going to do, when we're going to do it and perhaps. Propose an updated process, you know, six months from now, but that's kind of where we are from a review chart, excuse me, review committee.
Great. And once, I'd like to dovetail off that a little bit, just to remind councils, I believe that. Town Council Clerk sent out a request for input on future goals for the town manager for next year. So if you could get that to us as quickly as possible. Obviously, we want to work in consortium with not only delivering a review for the prior year, but obviously delivering goals and objectives for the, for the next year coming up. Any other committees? Okay. Moving to legislation for action. Ordinance D FY21-004, General Ordinance. Amend Section 2, Council Meetings of the Council Rules and Procedures. This measure was not referred to any committee. It has been duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website, therefore. May be finally considered this evening. Do I, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Or second. Okay, any discussion, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
None, thank you.
Mr. Wood? Okay, any questions? Right, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colombo?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Mr. Wood, you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Aide in favor, none against?
Moving on to Order OFY21-024. Wav annual license fees. The Budget and Finance Committee met on 11/23/20. They will provide their disposition to the full council. Finance Committee met on 11/23. Their disposition will be provided upon receipt. The measure will be finally considered this evening. Pending disposition from the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee. Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget and Finance Committee met last night. And we voted 3 to 0 to approve this, but I want to just. Talk about just one minute. Prior to the Budget and Finance Committee, I zoomed on the Finance Committee meeting and they were, because I wanted to be in on the discussion they were having about this. They had some questions. So I don't, I had to get off that Zoom meeting because I had to get on the Budget and Finance. Meeting at 7:00, so I, I don't know where they, where they are. I don't think that they were able to, according to the email we got from the council clerk this morning. They weren't, they didn't make their recommendation. So we have ours ready. It was a 3 to 0 vote. One of the things, and I appreciate Counselors Rushton, if it's given, bringing this forward. I tried to discuss with my two colleagues on the Budget and Finance Committee, potentially including inspection fees. In this, and we had a pretty deep discussion about it. It just, it just didn't seem to work. So I think we have to. I don't think we can vote on this tonight, but when we come, come, we come back next week, I don't know if the Finance Committee meets until Jan, December 7th. So. We voted 3 to 0 to approve it as it's written and the financial information that we got from the. Town manager, who got it from the Finance Director, would be about $80,000 to $100,000 in cap to the town. So that's just what we discussed last night, but I don't think we can vote on this tonight.
Right, Mr. Dutton, is that, is that your understanding?
Correct.
Alrighty, so I will entertain a motion to. Move this to our next scheduled meeting, December 1st.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I'm sorry, can we change the date? They don't meet again until December 7th.
Okay, so, so the 15th, all right, I'll entertain a motion to move this to our December 15th meeting.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any discussion?
None.
Mr. Gallagher? Anyone else on the council? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Colombo?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Aide in favor, none against?
Moving on to Resolution RFY21-002, Town Council Meeting Dates 2021. This measure was not referred to any committee. 14 days have elapsed per section. 18 of the, of the council rules and procedures, therefore, it may be finally considered this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Moved.
Second, okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any discussion?
None.
Mr. Wood?
None.
Any other counselors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colombo?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Aide in favor, none against?
We do not have any old business. We do not have any new business. I will move on to citizens' comments. If there are any citizens that would like to comment. This is the time to do so. I ask again to keep it to three minutes and before you comment, just identify your last name and your street for the record. Do we have anyone for citizens' comments? Well, good news is I only have one page on my iPad. I don't see anyone. And do you?
No, I don't.
Okay, moving on to council comments, I will start with Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you again for running a meeting through Zoom, which is. Challenging at best and I appreciate, I appreciate your efforts in doing that. I want to wish all my council colleagues, Mr. Dutton, Mr. Rollins, Ms. Homberg. Everyone in the audience here, all four folks and. And all the residents of Bridgewater, happy Thanksgiving. Stay safe, make smart choices. And let's all get together next Thanksgiving in a much, much better way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colombo?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Don't have Mr., did Mr. Suda join? He did not, right? Okay. Mr. Rushton?
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to thank publicly President Fred Clark and BSU. Some of you may or may not be aware that BSU is going to. Provide COVID testing for the entire BR School District on November 30th for all the employees. And other than that, I hope everybody has a safe and enjoyable Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Rushton. Mr. Wood?
Thank you. First, you know, something occurred to me, public safety, you know, complete streets, sidewalks, et cetera. Where's my tunnel in Plymouth Street? So maybe we can talk about the next time. Over the weekend, we had a lot of volunteers show up at the Styles and Hart Park. Appropriately masked and socially distanced. I, I have to give a, a big thanks to the town of Bridgewater, the highway department. They had gone into the park earlier and cleaned out the, the large. They had gone into the park earlier and cleaned out the the large pieces like the like the couch and whatnot. A shout out to Noonan Container Waste Containers. They provided the dumpster on site on Saturday morning. And a majority of the volunteers were Lions, but we had a lot of other community volunteers also. And we have gone through the entire park, which is off of Route 18, that new parcel that we purchased back in June is the first five acres of, which amounts to about 75 acres or so. We've gone through the entire park and we've picked up all the trash. So there was trash there for decades back in illegal campsite, some toys, some plastics, some other things. So it's looking really good at this point. The next step in as we talk about the future of the park is to start working together to cut in trails. I know a number of people are working on mapping out trails and paths that had been in the park and will be in the future. And then we can organize another event. But I want to thank everyone that came together for a couple hours Saturday morning to really make that happen. It looks really good in there. If you haven't walked the park, if you haven't walked the five acres plus the other pieces that we have, there's there's a clay pond back in there. There's a nice trail road from 18 where the guardrail splits. There's another path where the the rail across from the dry cleaners is. And it's it's a little more walkable now that the leaves are down. It's a really nice way to get off the street and get away from some of the sounds, not all the sounds. This Saturday, as as has been tradition for since about 1980 or so, the Bridgewater Lions will be on the common, putting up the decorations in our annual event. Again, you'll see us socially distanced and masked as much as possible. I think Dennis might even be there helping out.
Never know.
On the spot. Yeah, but you know, that's always an event that, again, I've mentioned this every year, but it reminds us of the, you know, the downtown area, the quaintness of our town, the common. And sometimes we see a lot of challenges in the common. But I always enjoy the holiday decorations for a few weeks, especially when they get a little snow covered and some lights and things like that. So we'll be doing that Saturday, Saturday morning, Friday, Friday will start on Saturday. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. I I'm reminded of another seasonal opportunity. I think that the Operation Santa is underway, where volunteers are calling for donation of toys, new unwrapped toys to be delivered to the fire station. I think that's a certainly a commendable event, an annual recurring event, and one that I think is very deserving and noteworthy. And I would urge anyone who's in a position to participate in that to to do so. And otherwise, I just hope that all have a healthy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Mrs. Loesch?
Yes, thank you. Just want to echo what Mr. Chase had just said. Thank you and hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving. I wanted to also to follow up with Mr. Rushton was saying about thanking the university. November is Native American History Month, and they held an indigenous history conference. And it's been running since the top of October, and it actually ended on Monday. But, excuse me, on Sunday. But there were a lot of great conferences, so I encourage those who may want to learn more to take a look at the speaker conference, the agenda, and see if there's some sessions that you might be able to refer back to. Wishing the Lions good luck this weekend with putting up the decorations. It's tis the holiday season and looking forward to some some cheer in town as opposed to other things that have been happening. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for running a smooth meeting that looked, the agenda looked like it could have gone on for a while, but it didn't. And thanks to the charter review committee for coming in to give us their update. And I hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving with their reduced reduced number of people at their tables, doing the best you can. And you might see me there, Bill Sutton, Saturday, you never know. But thank you.
Thank you. I do have, I do have a couple things. And what I'd like to do is, with the indulgence of the town council, you know, I'd like to have a moment of silence. I'm always very proud of the fact that even though Bridgewater's form of government is a city government, we're still, we have a small town feel. And what I'd like to do is just have a moment of silence for the Holt family for recent, recent events that have gone on, a family that's been in Bridgewater for a long time, hopefully is getting the support they need in their time of need. And it's it's something that I think as a council, what I'd like to do is just have a quick moment of silence for the whole family. If you'd all indulge me, please. Thank you. I echo everyone's sentiment in regards to Thanksgiving. I hope that in the same vein of support as a community, we have all been fighting this battle for a very, very long time. We're getting into a holiday season. I know people are tired. People are getting aggravated. I know that everyone involved, local, state, national, whatever the case may be, are trying the best to guide us through these hard times. So I hope that everyone enjoys their get togethers, no matter how it structured from there as well, but also get into the holiday seasons, not only being able to celebrate the holidays, but also keeping an eye out for your neighbor. I think now more than ever, we do need to be wary of our surroundings when it comes to our neighbors, our friends. And if anyone's of need, hopefully we can step in. But more importantly, there are resources out there to help us get through it. And from that, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And we'll talk for the holidays as well. Other than that, we do not have the executive session. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Why not? Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Colombodis?
Think he already left.
Mr. Fitzgibbons? Seven in favor, none against?
All right, everyone, everyone, a good night, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanksgiving.